And now, we have another surprise for you. And we're gonna take a few minutes to do it. We have a break that we would like to go. Some people could go out there indoor, but we're going out. And we're inviting all of you to come to this little break. Time out alone, don't hesitate. You don't have a lot of work to do. So we need your cooperation. Because I don't see any sleeping bags. So you didn't plan to spend the night with us. So we're getting ready to open our August 14, 2023 meeting. The public may view the board meeting at www.youtube.com. I will now declare our meeting to come to order. At this time, we will ask each of you to stand as we do our pledge of allegiance and you remain standing.
There's allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice in all. Please remain standing if you will. And may we bow in a moment of silence for one of our former school board members Reverend Joe Price, who passed recently, whose funeral services will be held this Wednesday at Wooten Wheeler and Woodley Funeral Home in Rocky Mount at 11:00 a.m. Please bow in a moment of silence for our former board member.
Item two on our agenda, we need approval of our agenda.
I have two changes. So if we would item 8.3B, if we will table that item, we'll have a discussion about that at a later time and then we'll bring it back as needed. 8.3B. And then add 10.3, approval of proposed change of system auditor. So at 6.5 is an item for information and then we will add it as 10.3, approval of proposed change of system auditor as we come back in from closed session.
I need to add an action item 8.7.13, appointment of new superintendent and approval of the superintendent contract.
Seven.
Thirteen. That is 8.7B. Oh, B. 8.7B. And others. All right. I need to hear motion to approve our agenda as amended. Susan, I'm just... Has been moved and properly seconded that we will approve our August 14, 2023 meeting as amended. Any other discussion on the motion? All in favor of the motion, let it be known by saying aye. Oppose, the same sign. Motion scattered, thank you, comment. Item three, recognitions. Susan Hope.
Good evening, Madam Board Chair, Mr. Vice Chair, members of the board, Superintendent Dr. Bridges. I'm excited to announce our employee of the month. Joseph Hayes, ECPS Director of Technology, can often be seen wearing his Superman bowtie. This piece of wardrobe is quite fitting. He is truly a Superman at ECPS.
Here, here.
But he's not coming through this.
Okay, so Joseph Hayes, ECPS Director of Technology, can often be seen wearing his Superman bowtie. This piece of wardrobe is quite fitting as he is truly a Superman at ECPS. He and his team work countless hours to help keep school activities and functions running smoothly. These functions include anything from testing, school board meetings, graduations, and just day operations. Joseph is a familiar face that can be seen at many of the events held by ECPS such as science fairs, career days, the Hattling on Common, and many more. He truly goes above and beyond and always has a smile on his face. He earns the title Superman and we congratulate him on being the August ECPS Employee of the Month. And also we're gonna present a gift card from Greg Sessons, who is a local state marriage, to Mr. Hayes. At this time, I'd invite Dr. Kathy Williams from the Oklahoma State University Neela Program to the podium for a special recognition.
That was a surprise, huh? Hello, good evening, everyone. Good evening, Dr. Bridges, Madam Chairman, board members, everybody here. I really appreciate you letting me come and speak today for a few minutes. So I'm Dr. Kathy Williams. I am with the Neela Program at NC State and I have walked the journey with many, many of your administrators in your school as they've gotten their MSA program. I've been in the program for 11 years since it started. And I need to tell you that Edgecombe has been our most reliable and steady partner for all those years. And I hope that we've been equally a partner with you guys as much as you have been with us. Anyways, I am here to honor Dr. Bridges. I've known her a long time. I've known her before she came to Edgecombe County and I want to tell you a few things about her. Dr. Bridges is one of those people who shows up. That is my motto. That's what I tell all my students. You just need to show up for people. And Dr. Bridges has shown up for us over and over again. I don't think there's a time that Dr. Fuzzarelle or Dr. Ward, Leslie or Bonnie or myself has said, geez, Melbridge, we could really use you. We need a panel member. We need a speaker. We need somebody to travel here. That she hasn't been willing to show up for us every time. In fact, I will tell you about another time she showed up. She showed up to go to Singapore with us, which was really quite a trip. Now I have to tell you about the trip because Dr. Bridges and I ended up sitting next to each other on the flight. And we are not, I was gonna say large, but I will say, we are not petite women. And we were in these rear only seats with not enough legroom strapped in for what, 20 hours? Yeah, for about 20 hours. So we spent our time in Singapore and it's time to come back. And I'm getting on the plane and who do I pass but Valerie, sitting all by herself in a single seat. All this legroom, she's all spread out. And I looked at her and I said, what did you do? And she said, I upgraded my seat. And I was like, oh, that's why she's the superintendent. Because she's way smarter than me. Anyways, so Valerie, really on behalf of Dr. Fuzzarelle and Leslie, Dr. Ward, myself, the entire NC State MSA family, the Neela family, I just wish you all the best. I wish you good luck and adventure on your new journey and I brought you a gift. So it's over here. It's kind of large and I apologize. I decided to get you a peace plant because they recommend, you know, they represent tranquility and serenity and that's what I hope you have when you leave this job.
And she did say NC State, right? So vote back, friends.
Y'all vote back.
Thank you.
These two women who sat next to you on the plane.
Thank you.
Oh, you're welcome.
Now I'd invite Dr. Wilson to the podium for a special recognition.
Thank you, Susan. I don't need to repeat anything about Dr. Bridges. I'm just presenting. Dr. Bridges, would you come back? I don't have anything large. It's very lightweight so you won't have any trouble getting back to your house. This is a gift on behalf of our board members to you. We're gonna miss you a lot. We could call on you anytime and you would be there. You got many calls from me. As a matter of fact, one morning I called you about six and you said, I'm just getting out the shower. I said, I have tea something. And I told you and you got right on it when you got to work and that type thing. And that was early on. That was early on your superintendency. So I said, oh, we've got somebody that's working for us now that you can call anytime. And that's what you have to be if you are superintendent. Because you never know when someone's gonna call, love you very much, we got a long agenda. Appreciate it. I always walk heels trying to be tall and I can't hardly walk ever. Want the whole board come around? Yes, go in. You can't see.
You always feel so short.
All right, thank you for bowing. And now, we have another surprise for you. And we're gonna take a few minutes to do it. We have a break that we would like to go. Some people could go out there indoor, but we're going out and we're inviting all of you to come to listen on the break. Time out alone, don't hesitate. You don't have a lot of work to do.
Did you see the flyer from Jess?
I did.
Okay, good. Yes. Did we break it out?
How are you? Good to see you.
Sure.
I'm good.
Just a second.
Bulletproof, I like it.
That's the thing.
That's right.
Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Did you see the flyer from Jess?
I did.
Okay, good. Yes. Did we break it out?
How are you? Good to see you.
Sure.
I'm good.
I'm good.
Just a second.
Bulletproof, I like it.
I can't wait.
That's the thing.
That's right.
Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right. Board members were ready. Board members were ready.
Jaffe. Jaffe. One of my men, all my goodness.
That's a shame.
You always do. You always do. Thank you. Well, thank you. Always thinking of us.
Do we have most of our attendees in the room now? Do we have anybody still? We're ready to start back. We were in such a hurry a few minutes ago, and we left our one recognition that we have to do tonight. Mr. Evans, would you come forward, please? Our county manager for Edgecombe County.
Good evening, everyone, to the board, distinguished guests. Thank you so much for allowing me just a moment to make this a very special recognition and presentation. First, on a very direct and personal way, Dr. Bridges, thank you so much for just what you have done for our students, for our county. I appreciate the great working relationship that you and I have developed and friendship as well. I envy your position. I can see you're already practicing that retiree smile without seeing some other folks. But congratulations is certainly well deserved. This is a proclamation honoring the Edgecombe County Public Schools Superintendent, Dr. Valerie Bridges. And this is, I'm presenting on behalf of Chairman Leonard Wiggins. It says, "Whereas the Chairman of the Edgecombe County Board of Commissioners, I serve as the County Chairman of the Edgecombe County Board of Commissioners, and whereas in so electing me as Chairman, my fellow commissioners bestow upon me the duty of serving as the official voice of the Board where appropriate and necessary. Therefore, it is with great pleasure that I honor the exceptional service and extraordinary leadership of our esteemed Edgecombe County Public Schools Superintendent, Dr. Valerie Bridges, on the occasion of her retirement. Whereas Dr. Bridges has devoted herself to the field of education, dedicating her unwavering commitment, expertise, and passion to the advancement and betterment of Edgecombe County Public Schools. And whereas Dr. Bridges has exhibited remarkable vision and strategic thinking, spearheading numerous initiatives that have positively impacted the lives of our students. And whereas Dr. Valerie Bridges has been a tireless collaborator, forging strong partnerships between the school district, Edgecombe County, parents, community organizations, and local businesses, fostering a sense of shared responsibility and collective pride in the success of our students. Now therefore being officially and publicly noted on the occasion of her retirement, I extend my deepest gratitude and heartfelt appreciation to Dr. Valerie Bridges for her outstanding service, leadership, and unwavering commitment to the students, educator staff, and community of Edgecombe County Public Schools. And I commend Dr. Bridges for her remarkable achievements and her steadfast advocacy for educational excellence. Her legacy will endure as an inspiration to future generations of educators and leaders within our school district. And I wish Dr. Bridges a fulfilling and joyous retirement, filled with well-deserved relaxation, happiness, and the knowledge that her profound impact on the lives of our students will resonate for years to come. Congratulations. I'd like to recognize Commissioner Harris is here. Commissioner Webb was here, but he had to leave. And certainly, we want to say thank you for your service at Edgecombe County Schools.
Thank you, sir.
So as we continue with the board meeting, I just want to publicly thank my board. Thank you for the dedication that you've shown to me. Thank you for the hard work for our students. I could not be a happier person as a superintendent. And when I used, I'd say, "Super proud superintendent," I mean it, right? So for 11 years, this has been the board. This has been home. This has been a great way to live and to be among people. Six years as superintendent, 11 years in the district. My husband is in the back. I'll ask him to just wave and recognize. We recognize, thank you so much. He's my best friend and my partner. We get to live a little bit of a different life. We get to slow down. We get to do some fun things. I get to play golf whenever I want to. I get to bother my grandson in middle school. I get to hang out with my mom, who turned 80 this summer. I could not ask for a better opportunity to kind of do things differently. But what I'll say is, we will remain in the community. So you'll see me at Food Line and Walmart and say hi to me. But again, this has been the pleasure of my life to be able to serve a community that loves its children. There's nothing better than serving in Edgecombe County Public Schools. So thank you all for coming out tonight. Thank you for being here. As Dr. Wilson says, we have a long agenda, and so we're going to get back to work.
Thank you, ma'am. Thank you so much for your comments. Okay, we're back at work. Public comments. This is that section. I will ask our attorney to just put a finger up when three minutes are up for each of our speakers. And as you will note, we have a time limitation. We do not deliberate whenever you make your three-minute speech. But if we need to communicate with you, we would do it within a 10-working-day period in writing. Okay, so our first speaker, Susan Perry Cole.
Good evening, Madam Chairperson and members of the school board. My name is Susan Perry Cole. I live on the Edgecombe County side of Rocky Mountain. My remarks tonight will focus on the demerger legislation recently adopted by the North Carolina General Assembly and the requirement to redraw electoral districts associated with SB 248. Since SB 248 provides that a portion of Edgecombe, Rocky Mount will definitely be annexed to the Edgecombe County Public School system, I speak tonight to urge this board to revise electoral districts now to ensure that the annexed Rocky Mount residents are represented on the board as soon as possible. Given that SB 248 set a timeframe for demerger of the Nash Rocky Mount School District, this bill also details that the Board of Education has the obligation to redraw electoral districts to incorporate the portion of Rocky Mount that is within Edgecombe County boundaries, but not currently a part of any Edgecombe County Board of Education Electoral District, since SB 48 details that the annexation of the portion of Rocky Mount in Edgecombe County takes effect July 1, 2024. Instead of waiting till the annexation takes effect July 1, 2024, it is critically important that the Board of Education begin the redistricting process now for the following compelling reasons. There are literally thousands of people in Rocky Mount that are being annexed into Edgecombe County. If the board waits until July 2024 to redraw its electoral districts, then the annexed Rocky Mount residents will not be able to vote in the March 2024 primaries for any candidate for the Edgecombe County Board of Education nor Nash County Board of Education. The unacceptable result will be to leave these residents completely unrepresented on either board. We understand the Board of Education members are elected during the March primary and take office at the first regular meeting of the board in July. Therefore, if the board redraws districts now and allows the annexed Rocky Mount residents to vote in March for their respective district candidates, then the annexation takes effect in 2024. The annexed Rocky Mount residents will already have representation on the board. If redistricting occurs now, I call the board's attention to the requirement that the redrawn board districts must fall within the population deviation to comply with one vote, one person, one vote requirement. As the board begins its redistricting process and considering the pending annexation, the board holds, the board should hold a public hearing within Rocky Mount so the board can specifically hear from these annexed Rocky Mount residents. Thank you.
Thank you. I will ask our speakers, if they will, stick to three minutes. I don't want to bang the gavel. Okay, thank you so much, Ms. Cole. All right, Ms. O'Ree.
Good evening.
Good evening.
To the superintendent, the chair of the board, and the board members. My name is Nathlin O'Ree. I am a resident of Rocky Mount, and I live on the Edgecombe side. And I am in partnership with the School Demerger Community Leader Working Group. And we are also in cooperation with the Southern Coalition for Social Justice. We are very concerned about the redrawing of electoral districts under SB 248. And as the board begins its redistricting process, it will be important that the process is open to the public and transparent. We want to be fully informed. There should be public hearings where public comment is solicited, both before the maps are drawn as well as after the maps are drawn. These public hearings should be well-publicized, please, and in the evening so that more community members can participate. Also, there should be at least two-week notice of any public hearing, and a virtual option should be offered. These public hearings can provide enough time for residents to present their complete and public comment. The community members should have the opportunity to give both written and electronic comment, including the submission of community-generated maps. Thank you.
Thank you. The real pedo. Okay. Richard Johnner.
Thank you to our superintendent. Dr. Bridges, thank you so much for your dedication and your commitment to our community. I know your telephone, you see a ring. Madam Chair, top forward. I am the Rocky Mount, as you know. I am representing, what, three of Rocky Mount City Council. Bring your greetings from Rocky Mount City Council. We look forward to continuing our work with you on demerger. We support what our community is bringing to you tonight. We're asking you to make sure that you give us these opportunities that we can be a part of this demerger. We offer to you Archie Jones, our human relation person, that will help you get your information out to our community. We, Councilman Blackwell, that would be here, but his mother had passed, and he's with his family. Keep him in your prayers. Councilman Knight, that is in Myrtle Beach for our electric city, and I left there to make sure I got here, so I can go straight here. It's critically important to us as a new superintendent come in that we have opportunities to have that new superintendent. Whatever those plans are, whatever the guidelines are, we need them in Rocky Mount. We want to be a part of this demerger. We want to make sure that the educational system, not only for Rocky Mount, Edgecombe County side, but our whole Edgecombe County, is the best educational system this world ever seen. So you have our commitment. You have our resources. And you have our complaints if it's not right.
Thank you. Thank you so much. Teresa Austin.
Good evening, everyone. From Edgecombe County School Board and Staff. And congratulations, Dr. Bridges, on your retirement. Below is a list of items for transparency by the Edgecombe County residents in the demerger process. Number one, we request that a webpage with updated demerger information for citizens, business, parents, staff, and the press. Updated demerger timeline. Demerger fact sheet providing all basic information on the demerger, on what would happen and to whom and when. Who would be affected? What will change? What would be the impact? When will key decisions be made and discussed in public meetings, forums? And who to contact for more information? Request a information flyer that can be used for faith, youth, and community events. Notice, a list and list of public meetings and forums allow virtual format with dates, times, and locations. Information sheets on key decisions involving students, staff, and facilities. Copies of all press releases, provide regular press releases and social media updates because newspaper doesn't always have the staff to proactively dig for and track and monitor information. Information on new school board process and districts. Zoomable map with street and road boundaries. Circleable by address so citizens will know what district they will be in as well as show location of all current members in schools in the new districts. Clear designation and school board agenda when demerger issues will be discussed and decided. And frequently asked questions page that is updated weekly and biweekly. Thank you.
Thank you very much. That's exactly what I was going to say. She's giving, I thought she was giving to Rose. I could read everything down. Very good, thank you. Camilla's dancing. I think this is Camilla's dancing.
Good evening.
Good evening.
I don't want to repeat what, too late to say before me because I'm here representing the same group. For any proposed registered maps, the board should provide any proposed maps in zoomable format with identifying streets and roads. And there should be a search function for residents to determine where the proposed district will be. The board should also provide the zoomable format for the current maps. These maps should be available on the Edgecombe County Board of Education website at least two weeks before any public hearing where the proposed map will be discussed. These proposed maps should include racial and ethnic demographic data for each proposed district, such as the total population and voting age population by race, ethnicity, and ethnicity in each proposed district. To aid in the process of analyzing proposed maps and the creation of community-generated maps, the board should provide the shape files and block assignment files for any proposed maps. To help with transparency, the board should publish a timeline for the redistricting process on the board's website and in print, including public hearing dates when initial maps will be produced, when final maps will be voted on, and when the pass map will be implemented. I just say, we're all from Edgecombe County, one mile from Southwest. Y'all know, I've been coming to the meeting for years. 60 years old, now getting old, so. But I plan to start coming back. Appreciate it.
Thank you. Thank you for your comments. Ron Freeman. Boys and girls.
Madam Chair and the board, I rise today just to say thank you to our superintendent, Dr. Bridges. Thank you for your service on the Board of Directors for Boys and Girls Club. But also, I really want to say thank you for working with us and making sure that we are in partnership with educating our young people. Thank you for that. I appreciate you. I know we've had some, we have some big plans moving forward. And maybe we can have some of those conversations as the new superintendent roll in as well. And I know that the demerger is going to be a lot for a lot of people. Even with us, where we pick up young people from schools and bring them to the club. Now, these kids may be, you know, several miles away and might not be able to pick them up. But we're going to work it all out because our young people, it's best that we do whatever we can in order to educate them. As Frederick Douglass says, "It's easier to build strong children than to repair a broken man." And we're going to continue to try to build strong children with the help of the school district. So appreciate you for all that you've done and all that you will continue to do in the community. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Green. I believe this might be the longest list I've looked at in quite a while. All right? But we certainly appreciate every comment that's been made. And we will take it seriously. Now, every one of you is not getting left, okay? But we will put your notes. Ann's writing just fast, you talking. Rose is writing. And then we have a recorder on. So we won't miss much of what you said. And we will take it serious. And you just reminded me that if you want to leave your comments with us, then you're welcome to do that. If you have a copy, if you brought more than one copy, and if you want to share. That's as much as we'll say about our public comments at this time. And we certainly appreciate you coming. And we will ask you to stay throughout the meeting. All right, we're moving to our next item. Approval of our open session minutes of July 10, 2023. I do not have any comments on that set of minutes. I will listen to any others that we have. If not, I need to hear motion for approval.
Make a motion to approve the July 10, 2023 business meeting minutes.
Has been moved and properly seconded that we will approve our July 10, 2023 regular business board meeting open session minutes. Any other discussion on the motion? I would favor the motion letter number two. Aye.
Aye.
Opposed, the same sign. Motion is carried. Items for information, Dr. Bridges.
Wonderful. So these board members, you should have a one-page update. So I just want to cover a few things that are here. Convocation will be on Tuesday, the 22nd. We'll be at Cady Auditorium on Community College campus. We will have a floating breakfast in the atrium, 8:15 to 9:15. And then our convocation will begin at 9:30. And you have listed there some of the items that will be available for breakfast. New teacher orientation. We have 38 amazing new teachers that will be joining us. We did day one at Princeville Elementary School with Dr. Pittman and her team. We have a diverse group of teachers that are really passionate and excited about starting a new year with us. We're excited about that as well. Day two, new teacher orientation will be held tomorrow, again at Princeville. Open house for the district will be Thursday, August 24. It'll be from 4:00 to 7:00 p.m. in the evening. And the last item you see listed here is our virtual program, Hope and Evening Program. And yet, we have moved through this school year. Our hope was to combine all three of those programs and make it a school. That has not worked out. You see that our numbers are not quite at 100, although we will have all three of the programs. We have around 70 students. About 20 of those students are HO students, so beginning, beginning their school year in that space on August 28. And then our social workers have helped with the process of identifying any of our students that are recent dropouts, that are under the age of 21. Again, remember, we talked about having the evening program and being able to pull those students back in and support them with getting their high school diploma. Dr. Battle has shared that right now we have 33 students in our district that are in need of A-credits or Ls. So those students will join, come back with us to ECPS after Labor Day. And our focus for those 33 students with less than credit hours is to help them to be able to graduate as quickly as they can. The numbers for the evening program will be a rolling program. And so as students are finishing, if we hear about other students and get additional information, we look through transcripts and we see that we have some students that maybe are struggling in the traditional setting, we will offer, make this offer to them. We'll be looking at some of these students who have dropped out, any students who are, again, are not doing well, to encourage them to be a part of the evening program, help them graduate. And then the next step is to help them get employment. With the virtual program, Dr. Dove, Dr. Barick are looking at a few programs that will help with that. It looks like we have ended up with a program called FlexPoint. We don't have a high number of elementary students, but we did want to have a program for them to utilize so that our teachers not have to create material every day. Of course, lesson plans, but we won't have to create the material. So for our virtual, we will start with four plates. And we're fourth and 12th plate for virtual. They'll use FlexPoint, but we've also decided that with FlexPoint, that we would utilize that program while we're tutoring throughout the year. So we're just trying to be a good steward of our funding, but also try to provide what's needed for students. So those are my updates. I'll stop and see if anybody has questions.
Ann, when you say tutoring, does that mean for all students in the system or just, just the virtual students?
Say that question again.
You said the FlexPoint program will be used for tutoring. Would that be for all students?
That would be for all students.
That would be a great idea.
We can utilize, we, I mean, they're a set number.
Sure.
But we won't waste it. We'll be able to use it for that as well. And it also gives us a chance to test it out, see what we think about it. And then if we decide to expand, we might, you know, if it goes well, then we can expand.
Any other questions to Dr. Bridges? Thank you very much for the frisian case. 6.2, Mr. Perkins.
Good evening.
Good evening, Mr. Perkins.
One chair, five chair, our board members, superintendent Dr. Bridges. I come tonight to make this update. to give the maintenance updates. This is Tabor High, but the workers came back and, but the yellow pipe stand, it wasn't all in together, they'll be coming back later on to do the electrician, so. This is your switchgear, got the power for Tabor High. They've been laying all the boxes this week, so. This is the wall that they tore down, you can see they rebuilt it, this is the door that they took out, they put another door in. This is West Mill, we're painting that school, this is the floor pictures, and this is the after pictures of what they're doing. This is North Edchcombe High School, and this is the band one, that carpet is pretty bad. So we went in, we had that taken out, we had the floor tiles taken out, we're putting the floor tiles in there. This is the after pictures, new floor tiles, new carpet, and this is what it looks like South Mill Chiller, this chiller has completely stopped on us, so what I did, I called around, we're gonna have to rent the chiller. So, when I say rent the chiller, we're gonna have to have them to bring the chiller out, set it on the yard, and hook it up, it's gonna start out, and our first payment is gonna be twenty-eight thousand dollars, and that's before they rent it out, set it up, and for them to come back and pick it up, and each additional month, it will be thirteen thousand dollars a month.
But you did mention that we've got one on the way.
Yes.
That we won't have it until December.
Yes, ma'am, yes, ma'am, December, this one that chiller's gonna be changed out, but right now, I'm there, just completely gone.
So the one that we're renting, sir, will be in so that we can, we won't have, we won't lose any time, we're gonna.
I'm hoping, I'm talking to him today, I talked to Dr. Bridges, and Dr. Bridges told me to go ahead, so I've talked to them, so we're gonna try to get it in as soon as possible, so hopefully.
But they have promised that they would, they did promise that the possibility that we will start, it'll be here to start school, is that right?
I'm hoping it will, I can't promise you that, but what I am telling you, that I've talked to him, and he said they're gonna make a move to try to get in as fast as possible, I don't wanna promise you that it didn't.
I understand, you're right.
It don't happen.
Mr. Perkins, what is the, is there a set, I'm sure there is a set paint schedule for the schools.
Yes, it is, like, last year, it's supposed to have been West, but we could paint West last year because of the pedals, so I have to push West to this year, and paint, so it's supposed to have been blue this year, but next year it will be blue, so, but there is a paint schedule, each year we're trying to paint.
We do a school each year?
Yes, yes, sir, we're trying to do that each year, but if something comes up more pressing that we can't do it, then we have to pick and choose, so we needed a fire alarm, so that's why we did paint West last year.
So the switch gears and everything at Tabor High, everything is ready to roll, is that right? I saw some people on top of the building, so they're setting everything.
Well, on top of the building, they're still working on air conditioning for your dining area, for you, sir.
The question I was gonna ask you, how much did you quote that we would need for them to bring this chip, uh, for July and fall, which was at South, Edchcombe?
Yes, ma'am, South.
Yes, that's, that's what, I'm gonna, twenty-eight thousand?
Yes, it will be twenty-eight thousand eight hundred and sixty-six dollars, and that's first month rent, set it up, and when we're done with it, they'll come back and get it in Mont Georgias Bay.
Okay.
Yes, ma'am, and it'll be.
Will we be using, uh, Esso funds for this project?
I don't know, that's an engagement, I don't know if we can actually use that money.
Yeah, I don't know if we'll use Esso or not, but with the temperature as it is, we don't have a choice about having the chiller at South, they wouldn't be able to have school if we don't have it, so, he talked with me today, he said it was twenty-eight thousand eight hundred something for setup, and then thirteen thousand a month, and my question was, okay, so how many months, and he said, probably true October.
Yes.
But we don't have a choice, because they can't be in school with no.
Right now, we don't have anything, we don't have anything.
It's unfortunate that we.
Yes.
I'm just hoping we did. I'm you too, yeah, and that's why I told him today, move forward, so we don't wanna delay a day. Great. Other questions?
Any questions other for Mr. Perkins? Thank you so much, Mr. Perkins.
Thank you all, thank you for your work, sir, thank you for your work.
Okay, six point three, Dr. Bridges.
Six point three, as you see, there were some overnight field trips, one was for North, they went to East Carolina and Greendale, but it was for the CTE students, and again, if you look in your board book, you'll see the documents for that overnight field trip that has already occurred. Any questions there?
Anybody have any additional questions? There are none, thank you. We'll move to six point four, Dr. Pittman.
Thank you, good evening, Madam Board Chair, Vice Chair, Board of Education Members, and Dr. Bridges, I'm reporting this evening, just to share, I'm super excited about a crosstown agreement with the Tabor High School Air Force JROTC and the North Edchcombe High School, being able to offer JROTC to students who are entering grade nine effective with the twenty-three, twenty-four school year. This partnership between North Edchcombe High School and Tabor High School will allow students to continue to participate in the character development and leadership development opportunity that JROTC offers, so again, just sharing that as an informational item, transportation will be provided by the school district. Any questions?
Anne, they had a JROTC, and it was Marines, are they still having that, or they're not gonna have that?
So it was actually the Army at North Edchcombe High School, but due to the specialized skill set of finding retired officers, our officers at Tabor High School have been very open to receiving students at North, and so just partnering up so that we can capitalize on that expertise that we have in the district, so.
I didn't know we were offering them, like, Army there, or they could come for the Air Force there, but it's just gonna be one.
Yes.
Well, thank you for making.
Thank Major Wilson.
No, I'm excited, my son went through JROTC, and it made a huge difference in his life, and I'm so glad all the children in our system are, have the opportunity to, for that character growth and development.
Thank you.
Is needed now, we will go with the proposed change of the system monitor.
Good evening, Board, Board Chair, Board Vice Chair, Board and, um, Madam Galloway. I'm here to discuss the item for action for the proposal of a change of auditors effective this year, twenty-two, twenty-three, the previous audit firm was retained for a period of eight years, although it is not recommended or required to change auditors at any specific period for having them for so long, and just upon coming into the district and some questions from others, it might be a good suggestion, and that's why I'm coming with the suggestion to make a change, also as I take Seda as the new Director of Finance. The audit firm is not required, this is a service to go and request quotes, but if you are interested in me getting quotes from other firms, I definitely will, this firm, I have received recommendations from our consultants and some other finance officers within our region regarding this firm, and that's where the proposal is coming from, for Anderson Smith and Wicks P L L C.
Ms. Hall, where is this firm headquartered?
They have multiple offices, some, their headquarters, I believe, is actually in Charlotte, but they have regional offices throughout North Carolina.
To us, is Charlotte?
Um, no, actually, the closest one to us, I believe, is, let me just look real quick, Elon, what is that, this, see, you're testing my regional knowledge of North Carolina right now, but I think Elon, is it like somewhere around Raleigh?
Elon, north is west of Raleigh.
West of Raleigh, okay, but before Charlie, am I close? Yes. Okay.
Okay.
Pardon me, I've never heard of West, and I didn't know where West was.
Only question, when I read the documents, I just wondered, how they find time to do one more count?
Well, one of the things that, yes, they do have a lot, and one of the things that she did say is that it is tight and a tight schedule, because they already have commitments, but they will be able to fulfill it, honestly, they may not be able to hit that October 31st date, but it will be fulfilled, their proposal of days will be before January, so that will keep us out of any non-compliance with the state, with DPI.
How are the rates compared to who we have now?
The rates compared to, well, currently, right now, we don't have anybody, because these are annual contracts, if we were to continue with the firm that we had previously been using, it is, it is an increase of close to a little under twenty thousand.
And since you handled the money, my second question is, do we have the resources to do, I mean, I'm just being open.
No, that's fair, and we do have the resources.
Because, I mean, you gotta, you gotta make it work at the end of the year, I doubt it, so, but when we vote, I wanna make sure that we vote on something that we have resources to do, thank you.
You're welcome, thank you.
Item for information, I think, but we'll.
No other questions?
Right.
Ms. Hall, thank you.
Thank you. Okay, you all have, you all still discussing, I didn't wanna move forward if you were still having questions about that.
Good morning.
Oh, okay, I know you had a conversation, so I didn't want to talk over you. Our committee reports, we're here from Policy Committee, Dr. Pittman.
Good evening, again, Board Chair, Sir Vice Chair, Board of Education Members, and Dr. Bridges, the Edchcombe County Board of Education Policy Committee met on August 1st to review the policies that are listed on this evening's board agenda. Committee members who were present on August 1st were Mrs. Anne Kent, Mrs. Lily Worser, and Mr. Brandon Ellis, the meeting was led by Policy Committee Chair, Mrs. Anne Kent, the materials were presented for discussion during the meeting based on the revisions as suggested by the North Carolina School Boards Association. When you look at the crosswalk, the senior board book, you will see the specific updates, those which are considerable changes, and then those changes which are minor in nature. Are there any questions from members of the board?
Did the committee find in the first fourteen policies that are revised, do we have anything in that batch of fourteen policies that stood out that the committee discussed?
We discussed a number of policies, and one of the things that we focused on during the majority of the conversation is that the policies were modified based on the definition of military families, so a lot of the changes that you saw in the first fourteen was based on the language which defined military families. Mrs. Kent, I'm not sure if you wanna add anything to that.
Thank you. And this is an item for action, so we will, we can have a motion.
Madam Chair, I'd like to make a motion that we approve the policies, the policy revisions as presented.
Has been moved and properly seconded that we will approve the policies that were presented for being revised. Any other discussion on the motion? All in favor of the motion, let be known by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign, thank you so much for that group, we'll move to the updated You have six more, so the ones that are just updated.
Minor, yes, ma'am.
Would be the minor changes.
Anyone have any questions on these, okay? Everybody shaking their head, so we all have any questions? Okay, we need a motion to approve a seven point one two.
Madam Chair, I'd like to make a motion, do we approve seven point one two?
Second.
Has been moved and properly seconded that we will approve a seven point one two policies that were updated. Any other discussion on the motion? All in favor of the motion, let be known by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign, motion is carried, thank you very kind.
I just wanna thank the Policy Committee for the hard work, and I wanna thank Dr. Pittman for always keeping us up to date, so we'll always be in line with the policies when the General Assembly changes something, then the North Carolina School Boards Association hops right on it, and Ms. Pittman, Dr. Pittman pushes for us to get together and get these in alignment, particularly at the beginning of the school year, so when our new employees and returning employees come, they'll know exactly all the changes that the state has made that we need to follow, and I thank Dr. Pittman, this time's a hard time of the year for you, but you always make sure we're in alignment, so thank you.
Alright, thank you so much. Eight point eight, our consent items, Dr. Bridges.
Absolutely, so in your board book, you see several fundraisers, and I won't go over the dates, but I'll just mention the school and the items, so West wants to have an office staff fundraiser to sell t-shirts, you see the amount there, you also see for t-shirts and sweatshirts, you see the amounts and you see the dates. Edchcombe Early College High School, they continue to sell the consignments for, and you see the amount and you see the dates there. West, another office staff fundraiser, Candyman, Southwest Edchcombe High School, the boys' varsity basketball team, they wanna sell all old basketball game jerseys and shirts, shorts, MMA fundraiser for Candyman, Bullock fundraiser for Candyman, and a marathon to sell restaurant discount coupons, and then South Edchcombe Duke School for Candyman, so those are. So, those are our first round of fundraisers for schools for this year.
8.2, we have time tracked.
Dr. Pittman will come forward. Scribbles Software. Thanks, so, good evening again. This evening, I would like to present to you, for your consent, the renewal of the agreement with Scribbles Software. Scribbles provides services for our online records requests and payment solution. There is no direct cost to the school district. $10 is charged to alumni with a $3 convenience fee for a total of $13 when processing orders, and then requests are free to our current students. And this agreement has been reviewed by the school boards and legal council.
Okay, does anyone have any questions or in the comments? If not, we need one motion to approve all of our consent items.
Madam Chair, would you make a motion that we approve the consent items for Scribbles?
It has been moved and properly seconded that we will approve our consent items. Any other discussion on the motion? All in favor of the motion, let it be known by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. The motion is carried. Thank you kindly. 8. B, additional items for action.
Ladies will come forward for 8.1B and 8.2B.
Ladies and madam chair, vice chair, board members, superintendent Dr. Bridges, I come before you tonight to request board approval for the purchase of Remind Communications Software for E C P S schools as a sole source in an amount of $16,313.22. I provided a chart with the breakdown of that total cost for you. Technology is requesting use S R 3 funds, P R C 181 for this purchase. The Remind Communication Platform helps every student succeed by providing an easy way for all stakeholders to stay connected at their school community, or to their school community. Schools and teachers are able to communicate in real time on any device, keep personal contact information private, and translate messages into over 60, 90 languages. Edgecombe County Public Schools would like to use S R 3, P R C 181 funds, to renew Remind 101 for the 2023-2024 school year to continue to provide two-way communication access for district and community. Remind is a sole source provider of the Remind Communications Tool.
Any questions? No questions? No concerns? It's an action item, so we need a motion for approval.
Madam Chair, I move that we approve the approval of the purchase of Remind Communications Software presented.
Second.
Has been moved and properly seconded that we will approve. Remind is a sole source provider of the Remind Communication Tool. Any other discussion on the motion? All in favor, let it be known by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Motion is carried. 8.2B.
This item for action, I present it tonight as a request for board approval to purchase Google Workspace for Education Plus in E C P S schools from C D W G as a sole source in the amount of $29,425 using S R 3 P R C 181 funds. I provide the chart breakdown of you for price, taxes, and total cost. The purpose of these funds is to provide Google Workspace for Education Plus products to teachers and students to enhance and support learning instruction. The funding of this purchase is from S R 3 Supplement K-12 Emergency Relief Funds, P R C 181, and C D W G is an approved vendor under the TIPS Consortium.
Any concerns? Hearing none, we need to hear a motion for approval.
I make a motion for approval of the purchase of Google Workspace for Education Plus in Edgecombe County Schools from C D W G as a sole source in the amount of $29,425 using S R 3 funds.
Second.
Has been moved and properly seconded that we will approve the purchase of the Google Workspace for Education Plus in E C P S schools from C D W G as a sole source in the amount of $29,425, and we'll be using S R 3 funds. Any other discussion on the motion? All in favor of the motion, let it be known by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Motion is carried. Thank you kindly.
8.3B, that's been tabled. 8.4B, again, if you'll take a look in your board book, we're asking for approval of the community facilities used application requested by Dozier Barber Shop using South Edgecombe Middle School multipurpose room for back-to-school activities on August 26, 2023, from 11 to 6. The request to waive fees and to exceed the six-hour limit requires, of course, board approval. Again, in your board book, you should see the one pager, item for action, and then you should see the request made, or supported by our principal, along with the policies aligned and the application behind that. Any questions regarding this request? Any discussion?
Board members, any discussion on that?
Any composition? I think we're very fortunate to have people in our community that have active school activities for our students.
Okay. We need a motion to approve this item.
Madam Chair, I move that we approve the Dozier Barber Shop using South Edgecombe Middle Multipurpose Room as presented to the board, in aye.
Second.
Has been moved and properly seconded that we will approve the Dozier Barber Shop using the multipurpose rooms at back-to-school, for back-to-school activities. Any other discussion on the motion? All in favor of the motion, let it be known by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Motion is carried. Thank you very kindly. All right, item for action, 8.5.
Good evening. E C P S students who reside outside of Edgecombe County Public Schools are required to pay as tuition an amount that reflects approximately the per capita appropriation of current expense funds from the county general fund and fines and forfeiture's revenue received by the L E A. The amount for tuition for the 23-24 school year has been computed as reflected in your board book. I request Board of Education approval this evening of the tuition rate of $1,671 for the 2023-2024 school year.
Thank you very much, Ms. Pittman, and we know that we are, this is the formula that we use for getting that amount. Does anyone have any concerns or questions to Ms. Pittman about the rates that we have to charge? Hearing none, we need to hear a motion to approve 8.5B.
Madam Chair, I recommend the Board of Education approval of $1,671 as tuition rate for the 23-24 school year.
Has been motion and seconded that we will approve the 23-24 tuition rate of $1,671. Any other discussion on the motion? All in favor of the motion, let it be known by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Motion is carried. Thank you very kindly. 6. E.
So, again, request approval of agreement between the Edgecombe County Board of Education and Tharrington Smith for the provision of legal services effective July 1, 2023. In your board book, you see information that shows our current rate, and you see an increase of $5 per hour for each of the areas, partners, associates, and paralegals. There's a draft of an M O U, and I am sure our attorney, if there are questions, will address those questions if the board has any.
Okay, thank you very much. Any questions on this item? Also, we are happy. All right, we need to hear a motion. I hear no other concerns.
Madam Chair, I make a motion that we approve the agreement between the Edgecombe County Board of Education and Tharrington Smith for the provision of legal services effective July 1, 2023.
Second. Has been moved and seconded that we will approve of the agreement between Edgecombe County Board of Education and Tharrington Smith L L P for the provision of our legal services effective July 1, 2023. Any other discussion on the motion? All in favor of the motion, let it be known by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Motion is down.
One correction, and I thank you to Dr. Dove. She heard me talking with the one pager, and we were talking about virtual, and so I said FlexPoint, but Ingenuity, FlexPoint, and Imagine Learning were the programs she looked at. The one that we settled on was Imagine Learning. So, in the event something comes across, I don't want you to say, she said FlexPoint, she corrected me, it's Imagine Learning. Okay? All right, thank you.
Oh, thank you. All right. Okay. Now, what? 8.7B?
Yes, ma'am. Madam Chair, I make a motion to appoint Dr. Andy Bryan as the new superintendent of Edgecombe County Public Schools effective September 1st, 2023, and to approve his contract as presented to the board in closed session, which was at the meeting that we had at 5:00 tonight. His contract is a public record and will be attached to the minutes of the meeting.
It has been moved and properly seconded that we will accept Dr. Andrew Bryan as our next superintendent, and his contract is a public document that will be attached to our minutes. Any other discussion on the motion? All in favor of the motion, let it be known by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign.
Aye.
Motion is carried. Thank you. We have one opposition.
Madam Chair, just a word about Dr. Bryan. Dr. Bryan comes to us, he's a seasoned and experienced superintendent from Lee County. He's hardworking, he's very excited about working with our students and our parents. The board will be happy to have him come to Edgecombe County and to work with us.
Thank you for those comments. Mr. Ellis, would you take this into closed session, please?
I make a motion under the North Carolina Open Meetings Law, Section 143, 318.11, 8.1, 8.3, and 8.6, to go into closed session, to consider personnel matters, to consult with the attorney, to preserve attorney-client privileged information, and to prevent the disclosure of student records rendered confidential under the Family Educational Rights and Privacy Act 20 U S C 1232-G, and the disclosure of personnel records rendered confidential under General Statute 115-C-319 through 321.
Second. Has been moved and properly seconded that we will go into closed session. Any other discussion on the motion? All in favor, let it be known by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Motion is carried. Thank you kindly, and we will take five minutes.
I need here a motion to approve our personnel management.
So, Madam Chair.
Has been moved and properly seconded that we will approve our personnel management. Any other discussion on the motion? All in favor of the motion, let me know by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Motion's carried. We finally get to this good page. Our closed session minutes for July 10, 2023. We need here a motion for approval.
Madam Chair, make a motion that we approve the closed session minutes from July 10. Sure.
Has been moved and seconded that we will approve our July 10, 2023 closed session minutes. Any other discussion on the motion? All in favor, let me know by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Motion's carried. Thank you kindly.
You know, what were we supposed to talk about this in closed session?
Was it close or 10.3?
I thought it was 10.3.
It is 10.3.
We were supposed to talk about 8.3D, the item tabled.
Okay.
Yes. Is that, can that be talked about in closed session? I only can ask that because their names listed there. And I just wanted to remind us of a request was made last year with the same name.
Absolutely.
And I don't know if we want to discuss that publicly, but you-
Are they student, individual student or staff members?
They're not students. They've requested the facilities used. And there were some websites and some things that were shared on the website that were not appropriate for schools.
If it's not student names or staff member names, it's an open session item?
Well, when I spoke with the sheriff and he indicated that that person might be a coach at the school. So I don't want to take a chance and say it.
Okay.
We tried to check that out, but we weren't sure if we had a yes or a no on if the person was a coach.
Okay. And if, I'm not sure if you're consulting for legal advice, but that would be a closed session item as well.
Yes. I'll make the motion that we go into closed session to discuss this matter with our attorney.
Wonderful.
You made the motion to go into closed-
I need one more time.
Second.
Has been moved and properly seconded that we go into closed session to discuss an item. Any other discussion on the motion? All in favor, let me know by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. You know, we didn't look a little too comfortable.
We didn't like it. I knew there was something else.
After here, it was something we just-
I saw it tabled, but I didn't see.
I remember saying aye. He didn't agree. We are not approving either 8.3B. Is that what the whole-
She has to rescind it.
We need to rescind.
We send the four and do whatever we do to three.
Make a motion that we do not approve item 8.3. Flight nine clothing using the South Edge County Middle School gym and parking lot on August 19, 2023. From 12:00 to 4:00 p.m. for back to school drop.
It has, it has been moved and seconded that we will not approve. I'm not on that section.
8.3.
8.3. 8.3BD. Any other discussion on the motion? All in favor of the motion, let me know by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Motion's carried. Now, 8, this, the other one, 8.4.
Madam Chair, previously the board approved item 8.4. And I, and I make a motion that we rescind that motion and deny that request for Dozier Barber Shop using the South Edge County Middle School multipurpose room on August 29.
I second.
Has been moved and properly seconded that we rescind our previous approval of 8.4. 8.4B. I was trying to repeat exactly every word you said, but-
I just, I just read it, I just read it out for the-
8.4B. All in favor of that motion? Let me know by saying aye. Opposed, same sign. Motion's carried. Okay? That clarifies that request. That we, we've just rescinded it.
Yes.
Okay. Now, what was I missing?
My question is, are we doing something with this tonight?
10.3.
10.3.
Okay. Yeah. Yeah. We just finished that.
So 2.3 was a proposal to change a system auditor.
Yes.
No further discussion?
And this is what Ms. Suh was wanting to stay, keep her around. Wouldn't that been a shame to make her sit here to this point? And when you asked me, I was trying to remember what I read. And did we need her again? That's what I was trying to think about. I don't think we have, well, I did not have a problem. The only thing that I had a question on, not a problem. I just know they had so many schools. And I was just wondering, could they ease in one more and do a fantastic job? I don't know. I mean, other than that.
I would think they would.
She did her homework.
I would think they would. I saw that as a strength.
And she did her homework. So basically, I wouldn't question.
Yeah, I think it's a strength.
She done it.
And a lot of ground here, Martin.
Right.
Dash.
Dash, all of them up there. Yeah, that's a strength.
All right, so we don't have any questions for her? Do you need to have a motion to approve this? But that's a, that's a, and I'm not saying I'm opposed to it.
I just want a statement on the record that that is a significant increase.
Oh, yeah, that thing too.
It's a significant increase. And I am not saying I'm opposed to it. But I felt much better after I asked if we financially could afford it. Because, I mean, at the end of the day, she's got to make sure that the bill can be paid. But $20,000, a $20,000 increase for an auditor, I think, is a significant, $20,000 is a lot of money. But I don't know the difference in one auditor from the other. So I can't say this is a good, bad, or indifferent one. And I don't have to work with them, and she does. And I think that that means a lot that-
It makes all the difference.
It does make all the difference in the world. If she feels that this is a group of people that can do a more efficient job for her, I can support it. But it, but it is a lot more money.
And my contribution to that is that we came close to losing more than that in the last audit. Losing funds, a lot, triple that amount in funds. So let's go with the one who can do the job.
Do we know that or did we discuss that?
We did.
At any point?
We did. Because we had to make the corrections. They had to send letters back.
Send an email back.
And release our budgets.
Okay, I need a motion.
Madam Chair, make a motion to Herr Anderson Smith and White.
Third public auditors to be the audit company for Edge County Middle Schools beginning with the 2023-24 school year.
And five.
Let me, let me see where you begin.
Well, I said begin. Well, I said beginning.
What page in your own, um?
Page 25.
Page 1. Oh, in the book for them.
Wait, he's reading back here. Oh, you're, you're doing this paragraph right here. All right.
Forty school years ending in 2023, 2024, and 2025.
Okay.
I second that.
It has been moved and seconded that we will approve Anderson Smith and will PLLC for the audit, auditor for Edgecombe County Public Schools for the years ending June 30, 2023, 2024, and 2025. Any other discussion on the motion? All in favor of the motion, let me know by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Motion is carried. Is it any other thing that, do we have any Board correspondence? Items brought by the Board Member or Superintendent for consideration. I need he a motion for adjournment.
Certainly, sir.
Has been moved and seconded that we adjourn this meeting. Any other discussion on the motion? All in favor, let me know by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign.